Regular session of the Grant County Council. I'll call this meeting to order with the prayer led by Mr. Rohrbach and the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Polling, if you would stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to meet as a council. We ask for your wisdom, guidance. May everything we do be decently and in order. Thank you for the public that is here tonight, for the public hearing. Lord bless us as we meet, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you would, Mr. Report, go ahead and do the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Scott, and I have not heard from Mr. Scott.
I did hear from Mr. Scott. He would not be here in attendance this evening.
Okay. Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Rohrbach.
Yes, present.
Mr. Hicks.
Present.
Mr. Polling.
Here.
Mr. Lemming.
Here.
And Mr. Middlesworth.
Here.
We do have a quorum. You should have received electronically and also within your packet the minutes from the regular session, April 20th, 2022. Are there any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? If there are no corrections, I'd entertain a motion.
You have to have heard of the minutes as presented.
Section.
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming, to approve the April 20th, 2022 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda this evening would be the auditor's report.
Okay, I will be brief, unless there are questions on the actual financial aspects, I won't make anything specific as far as comments. Things are pretty standard and routine. I wouldn't note one thing, however, there is an update we have on our circuit breaker losses for 2022. Hope you saw that in the notes that I sent out. During the budget time, the state had projected we'd be at 2.19 million for the year. It's actually more like 2 point, just under 2.5 million, so about a $300,000 increase in losses above what we expected at budget time. And just because of the way the libraries are prorated, the general fund would eat probably 250,000 of that, so obviously that's a detriment to our cash balance because of less dollars than any because of the losses, so that's what I had to report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Are there any questions from the members? Thank you, Jim. I'm gonna go ahead and change the agenda around this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and, we're gonna do old business first. Under old business, there's a consideration of requests for a tax abatement for Your Choice Digital. At this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Charity Bailey, who is the executive director of the Grant County E.C. Economic Development Growth.
Growth Council.
Council.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. So as you all know, I'm here asking the council to consider and approve a three-year phased tax abatement for Your Choice Digital. For the company, that's a savings of approximately 2 million, but income for the county amounting to approximately 5 million. So tonight, I just want to start and just say, I want you to think about what this hearing represents. We, as Grant County, have a chance to welcome a new, rising industry to the community. We have a chance to say thank you for choosing Grant County. And as county and as economic developer, we get to work together on the same team. So Your Choice Digital is projecting $122 million investment by 2025 with 30 well-paying jobs. Just on that information alone, we should be enthusiastic about this project. So you all should have received the packet, which was full of information, the process, and any complaints that we've heard so far. And the room is full of people who are willing to answer any additional questions. And then I also did want to mention, I know I sent it to Shane, but there is a draft of a community benefit agreement that we're working on, and that is to show that the company is willing to work with the community as they, you know, become a part and invest long-term here.
Which, sorry, all the members have received a copy.
Great, great. So at this point, I'm here to answer any questions or however you choose to move. Obviously, there's, Suzie is here and has a presentation, if you'd like to see that. We have someone who can do a sound demonstration, if that helps alleviate any concerns that you have, whatever. I also did want to point out, in the packet, I did show you a couple different options with the tax abatement. I showed you what it looked like with zero abatement for five years. I showed you a two-year, 50% abatement, and then I did the three-year phased as we described. And then I also calculated out what the property tax looks like going out 10 years, and that's just solely for your information. But as we all get to know each other and I get to work with you all, I like to present a couple different options because that's how we negotiate and kind of navigate through this. So obviously, we'd love to see the three-year phased. The two-year 50% is just another option that I threw out there.
Are there any questions or any more information the members would like to hear this evening? If there's no questions from the members, then we'll go ahead and start the public At this time, we'll start the public hearing and we'll entertain the public to speak. It'll be three minutes time, and, you know, the minutes stay with the person, so three minutes per person. Please keep it non-repetitive, and this isn't a question and answer session, it's, you know, good thoughts and comments regarding this conformatory resolution. Come to the podium, state your name and your address, and I think we're ready.
Good evening, council members and everyone here who's here to do this and interested in this project. My name is Suzie Jabarowski. I reside in Hamilton County, Indiana, and I am vice president and a co-founder of American Energy Global. What I would like to be able to do is give you kind of a broader context of what our company's doing and what our partner, Your Choice Digital, does. I am very aware of the question about the Chinese interaction, and I think it's a reasonable question to ask, and I want to assure you that these people who are here to bring this very profitable lucrative business are here as corporate refugees from China. They are not part of the Chinese national government. And I worked for the U.S. Department of Energy. I saw firsthand how the Chinese government stole jobs and intellectual property and things from us, and I see this as our opportunity to bring that back home and to bring a very profitable industry, and we would like to be able to work here in Grant County. If I could show just quickly a presentation about our company, American Energy Global, our role is to set up everything in advance for Your Choice Digital, our partner in mining, and we hope to be able to develop hyperscale level Bitcoin data centers across the United States that will not just produce Bitcoin, but it will also build out our energy infrastructure so that we have much more electricity in our country, which can then support other industries like electric vehicles and things like that. So our leadership team is an American leadership team, you know, Jay and myself, but retired Admiral Mike Hewitt is on our team. He does global nuclear infrastructure. Peggy Grande, who was President Reagan's personal assistant for 10 years, she does our external affairs. Jim Merritt, you may know Senator Jim Merritt from the state of Indiana, he was the energy utility, the Senate utility chairman for many years in the state senate, and the recently deceased Bud McFarland is our strategic, was our strategic advisor. He just died last week, but you'll know that he was an American legend among us, and so we miss him very much. So our company, as I said, the services we provide are putting together everything that is needed for Bitcoin to be produced. We do energy development, land facilities, energy monitoring. We do representation, like we are doing here tonight, and provide legal services. Everything from evaluating land contracts to making sure everybody's here legally through the immigration system. We feel our strategic advantages are that these partners are fully funded, they do not need investors, they have the largest pipeline of miners in the country, and we have American-owned company with trusted associates and access not just to mining equipment, but also energy infrastructure to help build out our energy needs. So in this county, if you're concerned about our use of electricity, we're adding another several 20 megawatts within three months, and then to scale up for more. In an event where you are without power, we will be able to turn ours off so that the rest of this community can have access. So it's a backup power arrangement, and it helps to build out your power at no rate pay or cost. So our partners, we have partnered with Your Choice Digital, they have access to over 630,000 mining units. It's not just going here that we're gonna land, we need to be able to build out 1.8 gigawatts of electricity. What we're using here today is just 20 megawatts. That is a small part of what our operation will eventually build. We have miners, this is a picture of the miners we have, this is the substation we would connect to with our low voltage, high voltage transformers. This is our site here in Marion, that's the substation. These are the transformers, all the equipment that we're bringing to this infrastructure so that you have that long after, if we ever leave, that's there, you can attract more business. This is what another project we're looking at, it's on pause right now, but in Coridion, Mississippi, that's what their project will look like, that's the substation there. But eventually, what we want to be able to do is build these large-scale Bitcoin data And we partner with a utility, we're talking to AEP, Duke Energy, Southern Company, many large-scale utilities across the United States to partner with them so that we can buy electricity and use the revenues from the Bitcoin, the revenues, to then support the utility in building out their infrastructure. That may mean improving transmission, improving the grid, but it will be a big benefit to the United States, not just by having this very lucrative industry here, but also by helping to build out the U.S. energy grid. So that's what I wanted to present. Thank you for being a part of this process.
Again, this is the public hearing portion, and if you'd like to speak, come to the podium, state your name and your address.
I'm a non-paid, non-professional citizen in the Grant County, and I love to live here. I'm happy to be here, and I kind of keep up with what's going on in the community. However, this Bitcoin problem or project, I didn't know a thing about, and I don't have to know anything about it because it's all nonsense, all legal. But when I asked different people, intelligent-thinking people that I know, nobody knew what it was. And I thought, why, why do we push this so fast when nobody knows what's going on or nobody knows what it is? So we had a little group together with Ryan, and he was very patient and kind and explained things in a polite and a voice that we could understand. And then I thought, okay, who really started this whole project? And so that would be the economic development. So I went over to Charity and I said, and I know there are 24 people on the board, and I said, has anybody seen this project going on? There's none in Indiana. And I thought, if I were spending the kind of money that we're gonna be spending, or they're gonna be spending, I'd kind of want to know what the thing looked like. I would have gone down and looked, I would have gone wherever they are, Tennessee, Missouri, different places. If I were in charge of that much money, I would want to see it on mine. So that was a disappointment to me. That was not, you know, I'm not saying it was right or wrong, I'm saying it was a big disappointment. And I think it was a disappointment to all my friends that I've talked about, they didn't know, they knew nothing about it, any more than I did, and why? It was a big secret. I mean, when I, when we did the cow thing, remember, we were gonna put all those hogs out there on 15, everybody knew it. We had a talk, and hundreds of people came, and we voted it down, not because it was good or bad, it was because we were here to stand for our rights. Same thing happened when the little curly rigs or the, what do you call those things, solar things were here. We had a big meeting, and a lot of people came because they were interested. And now we have this Bitcoin coin project, and nobody seems to know too much about it. Why not? It seems like every person on the board should have gone down there and looked at it if it was important enough to vote through. So that's just my opinion, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Go ahead, and if you got a question, come to the podium, or not a question, but if you got a comment, come to the podium and state your name and your address and...
I'm Jerry Solz, 11240 East, M00 South, Arion, 46952. I'm curious, stock market went to pot today, Bitcoin, I saw where Argentina had to bail them out last week or just recently for $40 million. I didn't, I don't think that China, a company from China, Chinese people can own property in the United States. I thought there was a law against that. Don't know if that's so or not. Who owns the property, or who's gonna own the property? Is it just equipment setting on? I know they've got shipload of equipment sitting out there on the ground already with tents around it. And that's, that's business as usual, I guess, but I don't think the Grant County economy can stand to give somebody a big tax abatement for something that we know nothing about and that is, it's a Ponzi scheme to me, I believe. And I don't know for sure, I don't know, I didn't get here, I thought the meeting started at 6:30, I apologize, but didn't hear all the comments. But who is actually asking for this tax abatement that we're discussing? What's the name of the company, or who owns it, or who is asking for this abatement? Do, is it, do we as citizens have the right to know, or has that been published? I haven't seen anything as to who the company is or anything. Do these Grant County citizens have a right to know that, or is it just...
Yeah, again, this isn't question and answers, but obviously, you know, it's Your Choice Digital is the company, and that's been public knowledge.
I saw Your Choice Digital, but I can't see who owns them, or I can't find anything out about them on the internet or anything to say who it is. Usually you can go on the internet and it'll tell you who owns, who at least one of the people is, and so I found out who the Willcock Group thing was, belonged to, I mean, I got on the internet, soon as I left here, and found out that who one of the owners was, and I just...
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jesse Carr. I'm at 1904 Selby Street. I don't know much about the tax situation and all of that, I'll give that to people who know a little bit better. I studied economics in college and political science, and I worked professionally in IT. I came, I think a question was stated earlier about, you know, who knows what this thing is and who cares about it? This is the first time I've ever came to a council meeting, and two of my friends over there, it's their first time as well. We came specifically because it was about Bitcoin. I've been into Bitcoin since 2017. It is a little difficult to understand because it's an intersection of technology and economics and money. And those things alone, especially money and how it's created and how it exists and how it came to be, is barely understood by most. Bitcoin, it was mentioned whether there's a question about it being a Ponzi scheme or not, and that kind of might make sense, or it might feel like that at first blush because it doesn't create anything tangible or real. Essentially, though, at base, it is a new form of money. It's the internet's first digital currency. It's the first way that there was ever a way of tracking who owns what, and then being able to transact instantly over time. Usually, when you buy something on the internet, you buy it through credit card, it goes to credit card companies, they settle up after the fact. Bitcoin is its own thing. It's also important to note that it's a voluntary network, so nobody owns it, no government owns it, no state owns it. It's made of people like me who run nodes, which keep track of a ledger, just like in a bank, and it's made by miners who basically direct computing power to make the transactions go. And they also secure the network, so no one can cheat, no one can take more money, no one can give more money, there's no printing, no one can interact with the system in a way that's detrimental for anyone else in a cheating capacity. But it's voluntary, and it's very interesting, and it's new, so it is confusing, but I'd look, anyone, I'd recommend anyone who really gets interested in it, to just do some research. Lopp.net, L-O-P-P dot N-E-T is a great place to start as economics resources and technology resources as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know who these people are, if they've got anything to do with China, I don't want them. We just had an election for sheriff, and every one of the people who came to talk to us, all five of them, they said, we don't have enough deputies, we can't take care of the jail, we're gonna give away $2.3 million, give it to us.
Thank you. Again, this is the opportunity for the public to speak regarding the conformatory resolution. I think at this time, the public hearing piece was closed. Before you this evening is the conformatory resolution of the Grant County Council declaring the economic revitalization area for first-time tax deduction for Your Choice Digital.
You know, I might know, considering three years, so if you were considering to change it to two years, you would have to amend this prior to its ultimate passage.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? Go ahead, Mr. Rohrbach.
Thank you. Mr. Middlesworth. When this first came before us, I had lots of questions. I've done a lot of homework, I've listened to a lot of people, I met with, I appreciate the open house we had Saturday when these gentlemen and Suzie were there to welcome us, and I appreciate hearing from the public. There are a number of issues here that I think have gotten confused. One is about Bitcoin itself, and I think the gentleman clarified that a little bit. The second is about the individuals that are here to do it. I don't have any questions about them at this time. I did it first, I wasn't sure where they're from and what their background was, I know a little more now. My objection is still, I'm still opposed because of the tax abatement. I'm not in favor, I think, the argument that some of the sheriffs, the people in the sheriffs' race about that we could use that money more than, that we don't need to give tax abatement in this situation. I just don't think we should do it. It has nothing to do with these men, I told them it's not because they're from China per se. I do have reservations about the Communist Chinese government, they do too. They got expelled from China, their business got kicked out by the Chinese government. So there's some kindred spirit going on there. It's not cultural, it's not ethnic, it's not racist, it's not anything about Chinese, it's not about Bitcoin. I'm old, I'm learning about Bitcoin. To me, it's kind of like dish soap. There are a number of different kinds of dish soap, joy, gain, I mean, name them, and there's different kinds of Bitcoin. There's Tez, and, I mean, I can't even name them all, but it's a, it's a new brand and a new genre, if that's, can use that word, I don't use it often, but, and so that's a side issue. Who they are is no longer an issue to me, but the tax abatement is still this huge, huge thing, and so I'm still opposed, and I was at the beginning, and I said I would research it, and I have. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Connor.
Yes. I think the basic question the people of Grant County ought to be asking themselves at this point is, what kind of businesses will we welcome to the county? In the past several years, I've seen business after business turned away, and I'm not saying that there were bad reasons to do that. I probably wouldn't have wanted to live next door to a combined feeding lot myself, but, you know, we turned away a prison, we turned away the feeding lots, we turned away wind turbines. At what point do we start welcoming businesses, and are we gonna do that before we're a ghost town, or a ghost county? What we're talking about here is a computer business, a computer-based business. What quieter, cleaner business do you want in this county? There has been no evidence whatsoever presented that this business has any connection with the Chinese government, other than the nationality of some of the people involved. And that has nothing to do with the Chinese government, it's an improper... It's an improper inference being drawn from nationalities. And I'm old enough, I can say what I think, that smacks of racism, period. I don't care what nationality somebody is, if they're an American citizen, if they've set up their corporations in the United States. They deserve to be treated like citizens and welcomed. And Mr. Solch, you can have my packet of information that sets out all the background of this company, which shows all that. It's public information and yes, you're entitled to it. I think corporate refugees is a good term. I was glad to hear that. The United States has a history of welcoming such corporate and business refugees. I mean, I can name business after business after business going back before even 1900, where people of other nationalities have come to the United States, started new businesses. And we are their sons and daughters, grandsons, granddaughters, et cetera. And they are now thriving businesses and employ people. And I'm a news junkie. I watch the news every night and I can tell you China chases out folks like this. China's loss can be our gain. As to this being a Ponzi scheme, I'm sorry, I strongly disagree with that. I started to pull out my wallet and show you what a Ponzi scheme is. You could, under the theory we've heard tonight, argue that this dollar bill is a Ponzi, Ponzi scheme because it's not gold. It's a piece of paper that represents a value. And all we're talking about here with Bitcoin is a way that keeps track of value without a piece of paper. This is awfully thin line or wall to build up between us and having a new business. Your credit cards are a piece of plastic that represent a value. It's not a Ponzi scheme. It's just something that's some, hard for some of us to understand. Well, I don't understand a lot of what NASA does, but I know they're here and they employ people. I don't know a lot about what Tesla does because it's way over my head from a technology standpoint. But by golly, they're here employing people and spending money and promoting the United States. As to tax abatement, generally speaking, this is not taking money away from anyone. It's found money. When they finally do get back on the tax rolls, that's when the money starts coming in. You remember the quote from Ten Commandments where Charlton Heston is saying, "A dead slave makes no bricks. An empty field employs no one and pays virtually no taxes." After the tax abatement expires in this case, you know, I wish them well and I hope they last. I hope they're still here and that they start paying taxes. Until then, we've lost nothing. We just offered something for them to come here and support them. And I would also point out, we need to send a message outside the borders of Grant County that this county is a welcoming, friendly community to businesses. If other businesses here that we will offer tax abatement to turn empty fields or dilapidated properties into going businesses that employ people, well, guess what? We can compete against other counties and those folks will come here. Right now, we have a reputation of being unfriendly to business and it's killing us. It's time for this to be a new Grant County. If you don't believe me, go look at the smoking pit where active products used to be. Go look at the other closed businesses. It's time to say, we're a new county, it's a new age. We're going to welcome new businesses, new technology. Even if we don't fully understand what widgets that they're making, I do understand jobs. I do understand paychecks and I welcome them and would really encourage my fellow council members and you, Mr. Rorback, to change your mind and support this for the reasons that I've set out. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Connor. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the members?
Just an aside, if I could, on tax abatement, that that seems to be the issue. The issue is not the other things, it's tax abatement. Tax abatement is usually reserved for people that are thinking about coming here. Once you've started your project and it's underway and you've already installed it and it's nearly operable to offer the tax abatement after that. Mike, I don't believe you would offer somebody an incentive to buy a car that you're selling if they already were going to buy it, period. You wouldn't say, well, I'll cut it down to 2.3 million for you. You wouldn't do it. So that's, that's where I am on the tax. We've offered tax abatement, I've voted for it in the past. But I, I don't think we're unfriendly. Go ask Dollar General or go ask Walmart if we're unfriendly to have them here. We're not, we're glad they're here. And I welcome these gentlemen and the business they come. I just don't think we ought to give $2.3 million to say thank you. I'll write them a thank you note, but I'm not signing a check for it. That's my, that's where I am on it. That's the difference, I think, with you and I are saying.
And I, I appreciate that, Mike, and you've made it clear that's your only reason for opposing. And I, I can't tell you how much I respect that you've done your homework and educated yourself about the other issues. Bravo. I don't think it's a fair comparison to say this is like a car that somebody's already said I'm going to buy.
That's because that's in my favor. That's why you don't like the comparison.
Well, it's apples.
But I understand. I didn't expect.
I'm sorry, I thought I was still speaking.
Yeah, you were.
Okay. I think, do I have the floor now?
Go ahead, Mr. Connor.
I think it's apples and oranges because a car is not going to, you're not going to help it keep going down the road by giving a lower price after you've got it sold. Here, a tax abatement could very well help this business continue to operate and survive. Because we all know that when a business is first starting, that's when it's most vulnerable. That's when it needs the most help. Let's get them here, get them established, support them so they're strong, so that they stay, so that they keep employing people. And then it'll expire and we'll get those, that 2.3 million and more in the coming years.
I would like to make a comment to Mr. Rorback's comment. Typically, when, you know, outside investors are looking at Grant County, they want to acquire their assets such as the land prior to, you know, any involvement with development so they can secure at a lower price. So as far as building something, typically I would say they have the land already acquired before they would seek an abatement in most cases. And I would say that's probably all the ones I've seen anyway. And to say what the tax abatement, I believe, will do for Your Choice Digital, it'll help them scale faster. So I may be wrong, but, you know, maybe they have X number of pods and, and they want to get to X number, more pods. And having that tax abatement will help them to, to scale up faster, to get to the 30 jobs, to the, to the houses, to some of the other things that would benefit the county. And, you know, I'm not a fan of tax abatements as most of the members are on this board. But when I look at farming, you know, think about, I mean, me as a farmer, how much subsidies farmers get to, to keep the, the grain prices lower and, you know, the, the value, the assessed valuation of the land. And so you look at, every business is probably getting something or has got, has received something over time. I, I think that's what I lean to. But as well, I just want to mention that, you know, there is a memorandum of benefit that we haven't talked about this evening. And Charity, if you want to add anything on the memorandum or talk about that briefly?
A community benefit agreement or memorandum really just puts in writing what we as a community and what they as the company plan to do in, in being in our community. So that it goes back to the 30, the 30 employees, the pay, what their total project is. It also talks about them making a donation to the Boys and Girls Club. I did clarify that with Jay to ask how long he's willing to do that for the, the life of the time that they're in Grant County. They're willing to, to be a sponsor for the Boys and Girls Club. I've already made arrangements for him to meet with Ronald Merle Jr. to start to discuss what that looks like. So that is underway. The agreement also talks about the employees, where they live, where they, where they find, where Your Choice Digital finds employees is part of this agreement. The Growth Council is willing to help facilitate job fairs. Your Choice Digital is willing to come here and to present to you on a yearly basis to make sure that they're saying, that they're doing what they say that they're going to do. The Growth Council is willing to help provide housing stipends for leadership employees that come to, if they're not already in Grant County, that they purchase a home here in the community. And then the last item on the agreement is regarding the noise because of the fans of Bitcoin and, of the, of the servers. And Your Choice Digital, when we talked about this, they take that very seriously. They don't want to be in the news as being a nuisance or being a problem. And, and so we were very intentional about what their remedies are for, for complaints once they're up and running. So this again, just puts all of that in writing so that you all know what the owners are willing to do and you can keep them accountable to it.
Has that been filled in? Have the numbers?
Not yet, that will be, that will be discussed. It's in draft right now, but we wanted to come here first and see how this all plays out. You will see a finished draft, a finished copy.
Is there any other questions or comments or questions about the benefit memorandum?
Well, I thought, I built a building 12 years ago. And I didn't know the county give tax abatement. I'd already started the building, come fight for the tax abatement. I couldn't get it because I had already started it. And I'm a citizen and taxpayer of Grant County. And to me, if you can spend $122 million, what's 2.3 million? Our county is in way worse need of that. And sooner or later, you gotta quit competing. You come to the county or the city because this is, you think it's a nice place, this is a good place to do business. And so what we've been doing all over America, no different back in the steel days when we had all the steel plants. Everybody could beat it, compete it, compete it, but all Americans have business. That's exactly what this is. And the bigger you get, the more noise it is because I have done research in Tennessee and everywhere. And they're already planning on making it bigger. If you can actually say you can spend $122 million, you shouldn't be asking for a tax abatement because of all the money you're saying you're going to make. And if I'm a citizen building a new building and I already started it and I, and I didn't know about it and I come down and ask for a tax abatement, they tell me I can't because I've already started. What's the difference between me and him?
If you're asking me, I can't explain it because I didn't hear that as a petition while I've been sitting on this council. And I can tell you, if I had, I'd have considered it for sure. If you were going to employ people, absolutely.
I agree.
You'd have my vote.
Is there any other questions or comments from the members?
About that agreement, is that binding or will it be filled in? Or do you want it filled in before we vote on this or, I mean? That's like Bitcoin, it's out there somewhere, but there's none.
What are your thoughts, John?
Pardon?
What was your recommendation?
Well, I mean, if you're looking to see what they are, obviously at this point you have no idea. Like, for example, what the dollar amount to be given, the boys' club, is that a dollar a year? Is it, you know, $10,000 a year? So there's certainly no way you're going to know that without it being indicated in advance, certainly.
I've never seen any, we haven't done anything like that before, so it's some kind of.
Well, you don't have to be an attorney to know that it's not filled out and signed. It's not binding yet. The way I take this.
Even I thought that, my confidence in that.
I take this as a representation of expectations only at this point.
Good intentions.
Yeah. I mean, and for the record, again, this is public, public record now. And anybody in the audience is welcome to have a copy of this and you can see what's being represented. This is absolutely transparent. And it wasn't mentioned, 30 employees was mentioned, but it also says expected to pay $45 an hour and a total capital investment of $122 million by 2025.
And I will tell you on this, you, you might want to know what this is and how it influences your vote. You can't make this condition of that formulary statutory, you don't have any right to do that.
So us being offered this information is, is not necessary for their application, it's just information.
Man, we're going to influence your, your vote to know they're going to do these things in addition. But I'm just saying you can't make it.
Yes, so the only thing on this agreement that is enforceable is the, is number one because that's tied to the tax abatement paperwork. The rest of this is, is for your benefit and the company's benefit so that it's not just floating out there of like, I think they said that they would do this, that you actually have something in writing. It is not enforceable in relation to the tax abatement if that were to be granted. It's meant to be just an agreement.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Charity. Yes, go ahead, Jay.
Um, Jay, the president of America, I let you go. Okay, I friend of cryptocurrency from overseas to the United States. I want to come to Indiana. I come to Indiana all five. I didn't tear whole five years, I come to Indiana. 2020, when China shut down, my friend called me, Jay, where I need to go? I said, come to Indiana. Indiana, welcome. Well, friendly state. Well, number one, friendly state, United States. Okay, I got a signal. Do not go to Texas. Do not go to Arkansas, not go to New York, go to Indiana. Because I've come here 15 years, I know the Indiana, nice, friendly. So when the people, cryptocurrency come to the United States, they look in three things. Stable electricity, competitive pricing, the last thing, friendly. Okay, people tell, we was, we already start here, right? We, we already start 20 megawatt. We can scale up 100 megawatt to 300 megawatt. I reached $120 million by 2025. But if we feel, we not feel friendly, we may be stopped. Because I had a phone call from Ohio. They called me, Jay, come here. I give you 10 years abatement, Ohio Columbus. Okay, this morning I had a call from Utah. They come, Jay, come here. Our center, why don't you come here? I said, I'm from Indiana. This is my hometown. I have two kids, seven years boy, 10 years girl. I said, I, I rather stay here, build a house here because we are friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, Charity.
I add, that prompts me to add one more thing. I can't tell you who, if I have a family member that owns a manufacturing plant in Illinois and guess where he's thinking of moving his plant to? Indiana. Why? Because of our tax incentives and being a friendly place for business. Why? Because of our tax incentives and being a friendly place for business.
So there's no other questions or comments from the members? At this point, I'd entertain a motion for the formulary resolution of the Grant County Council declaring the economic revitalization area for the personal tax deduction for Your Choice Digital. Is there a motion?
Submit.
Is there a second? I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I think the motion dies for lack of a second. Phil, what else do we need to do this evening?
Oh, there's nothing.
Okay. Let's take a three-minute recess. So I believe we're back to new business. Pamela Harris is asking for $262 for voting machines there. She has to move on.
Thank you. Thank you for coming before you this evening. We had to have, in the clerk's office, repaired to one of the voting machines at the cost of $262.32. Within the clerk's election budget, I would just like to move that money from voting machine supplies into the repair of equipment, all within the clerk's election budget.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any other discussion left to ask any discussion? Any other discussion amongst us? Public input? Mr. Carter, can you call?
Sure. Mr. Scott, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Rohrbach?
Hi.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Polling?
Yes.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Mr. Middlesworth? Oh, he's on his own? Okay. We got five of his best.
Okay, so motion is passed. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Will it move at this? I got to bear with you. Mr. Nevilles, I see you on the machine there. How are you?
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. Good evening. And I'm making a request also regarding to a transfer. It's no secret, as everybody know, we are short on manpower. So we've been utilizing deputies to work inside a jail and also our jail officer has been working overtime. And so we have exhausted our overtime. I think we might have approximately 10,000 or so. So we are asking permission to transfer approximately $250,000 from salary into our overtime so that we can finish out the year. I know that's a lot of money, but the reason why we are asking for that amount at this present time so that I will not have to come in front of you guys. Because I'm planning on not coming in front of you guys for the rest of the year. And I guarantee you will not see my face again in the year. I see you laughing there.
I love talking to you and seeing you. You look good.
Yeah, yeah. You look better than I do. And so with that being said, I think, and I strongly believe that too, $250,000 will be enough to complete the year. And also, as we know, since this is a public hearing, we are still hiring at the sheriff's department. We are still down approximately 19 jail officers. But there is light at the end of the tunnel and we're going to continue recruiting and doing all we can for Grant County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions among the council for Mr. Nevilles? Sheriff Nevilles?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any other information that needs to be asked or put forth, any public comment? Roll call?
Okay, Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Rohrbach?
Hi.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Polling?
Yes.
And Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Sheriff Nevilles.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you for hanging in there, Sheriff Horace.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Ryan Malott from Area Plan. How are you, sir?
Good, gentlemen. So what I am asking for, as you can see throughout, this year, we took our budget from, we had been running at $6,000 for Garage and Motors and had raised it up to $10,000 with gas prices and everything going up. And ended up starting the year off with losing the rear differential in the building inspector truck for 2,000 months. We knew we were going to replace tires in the COVID enforcement truck, but then found out we had brake issues also. That's the one that the sheriff's department got us for $1,897. So that kind of chewed up our extra $4,000 right off the bat. In talking to Captain Beatty, kind of noted in here, we started off 2021 at gas at 181 a gallon. It was up to 252 a gallon in budget time. Captain Beatty said the last tank he just filled up is at 320 a gallon. So with that going up, what I am asking, and on top of that, ironically enough, yesterday, my building inspector got in a wreck in Gas City and the building inspector truck. So we've got to take it actually tomorrow to get estimates on it. Hopefully, we can get it fixed. We were able to get a spare tire on and drive it back. So basically, we are down to $3,185 left. Left in the garage of motors. What I'm asking for is to do an additional $10,000. I'm hoping that we don't need that much. But trying to figure at about, we have got gas bills for $1,056, $868, and $872. I figure our gas bills are going to jump up to around $1,000, if not a little bit more. So I just kind of tried to average it out.
Any questions from the members? We did the advertising, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just have a think with that. Can we get that?
I do have copies of the details.
Any input from our members? I have a motion to appropriate $10,000 for fuel and repairs based on Mr. Malott's presentation. Submit.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any public input? Mr. McWord, you want to call roll call?
Sure.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Rohrbach?
Hi.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Polling?
Yes.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. I see nothing else on our agenda. It was referred to, there's going to be an opening. Mr. Connor has resigned from, what is LAC? So if anyone would want to take that position, you can contact, or if you speak up now, you can take it, otherwise, just contact Mr. Middlesworth. And you, are you already on there, Mr. Rohrbach?
Not, I am not the council rep on there.
Oh, okay, you're on. Same thing.
I'm on there as a citizen.
Okay.
Yes, a question.
Yes.
Could you become our rep and then get some other citizen for that chair? That way, one of us is there. You'd still be going, same meetings.
I could. I believe, it's up to Chris Cunningham. I don't think he would, yeah. It really would make...
I'm not the volunteer. I guess.
Yeah, why don't you take?
Take your spot. Well, we can, I'll let Shane know and Mr. Middlesworth, then we'll see what we can do.
That's fine.
Okay. And if Chris has somebody else, we'll do it that way. If not, we'll come up with another plan. All right, gentlemen. Anything else I'm missing?
I think that's it.
Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, June 15th at 6:00 p.m. And I think that's it. I appreciate it.
Well, you had Mr. Vice President.
10 minutes. I need to work on my gingerbread.
I think you just saw who's going to be the next president. Quick meeting.
I'm definitely going to need a little ginger.
All right.
See you later. It's funny because Shane was asking, we need to ask...